The Commission is, once again, back in session. Everyone settled in. Public hearing has been closed, as stated before. At this point, we're going to allow comments from the Commission and the members, and also allow a rebuttal on behalf of the petitioner to some of the questions and concerns of a race during a public hearing. If the petitioner wishes to respond.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, for the record, Kevin Burns. Yes. The staff members are going to pass out some photographs of what that intersection currently looks like today. In response to several remarks, and I would like to make some clarifications. One of the first speakers said that you were going to have auto repair centers all over the CB2W district. Staff was very, very, to the point that says, "No more than 15 percent of the square footage could be dedicated to service." And that's minor repairs. Where individuals came up with a number that this building or this Volvo dealership is going to take 90 parking spaces away from the ground floor is a flat-out misinformation and has never been spoken about by the applicant, nor did staff ever say they were going to take 90 parking spaces away. Reminds me of fuzzy math. The showroom is 7,000 square feet. It's a total of 7,500 square feet that is available, but you have a common area. There's additional square footage on the bottom of that building for the elevator bank, the mailroom, common bathrooms. But the showroom is 7,000 square feet. Take in part of the parking garage. This facility will take in no more than 25,000 square feet total between the showroom and the parking area where they're going to have their vehicles and so forth. The floors of each of the buildings are not 40,000 square feet. By the way, the ground floor of the parking garage is 32,000 square feet total. Multiply that by three times, that's how much parking square footage you have because it is a three-story parking garage. It currently has more than enough parking spaces to satisfy the potential use and what to keep the tenants and the people in there happy. Common sense, we were told, to think of, common sense, do you really think that somebody's going to buy 58 percent of the building, that they're going to lease out and use, but make it very difficult for their tenants and customers to park, or do you have adversity doing business within those buildings? It doesn't make sense. It's the same argument that they have about the new Publix. Publix builds 1,000 new stores. They know how to build stores. Do you think Publix is going to build a grocery store that's going to be detrimental to their deliveries or detrimental to the community that they serve and to the customers who have to go there? Of course not. These were the same unfounded remarks we had when the Publix wanted to reconfigure. The same unfounded remarks when Johnson &amp; Wales wanted to add classrooms. The same unfounded remarks when Johnson &amp; Wales added student housing. Same pushback when Johnson &amp; Wales wanted to put a calming circle. You know what? The city didn't fall apart. They made a tremendous investment in that area. The other comments, there's 47 parking spaces in that building that are assigned or owned by individuals. And again, they're going to maintain them. If need be, when we get to the next step, that the staff determines there needs to be more parking, guess what? Under today's current code, they can add two more levels of parking if need be and if they choose to. But most importantly, if they need be, and they will still be under the height restriction that exists in that zoning district. So they are not going to make this investment in this community to be a hodgepodge, not functional process. Volvo builds a lot of dealerships. They know how to sell automobiles throughout the world. Yet, we have individuals who want to tell Volvo how to do their business, what's best for their business, and what their business model should be. We're not reinventing the wheels. This is something that's very, very common. Right now, and they said, "Oh, Publix is going to start unloading trucks." Well, guess what? Publix unloads trucks today at their grocery stores. If you look at those pictures that I presented to you, it is the intersection that we're Tell me if the AT&amp;T store, the T-Mobile store, the Evios, the Sudsy Dry Cleaner and Washing Place, those pictures, is much better than this. If that's the status quo, and that's what we're shooting for, or this? We can have this. Or do you want what is there? This make-believe notion that people are going to come out of the city to invest because we have a Whole Foods up the street is nonsense. Or because we rebuild our Publix despite the public outcry that they didn't like the way it was facing. We're not going to have dealerships up and down Biscayne Boulevard. It's in there. It says one acre minimum. So, to clarify, because it is a zoning, a zoning wide. That zone goes from 135th Street, south to the Whole Foods, west of Biscayne Boulevard, to 16th Avenue is the predominant area of that zoning district. About 60 percent of it is owned by Johnson &amp; Wales or part of their master plan. Kenny, I'm building a dealership on your street, by the way. You know, you're a perfect street to build a car dealership. So you have a very successful bank mall that's on the corner of 135th Street. That's not going anywhere. You have a new reconditioned shopping center where you have Five Dives, Red Lobster, you have all, Brandon Navarro's. Folks, that owner isn't going anywhere. Spent millions of dollars renovating that place. There's no one acre there. In fact, somebody made a comment that you can't go south because there's nowhere there, and you can't go north because there's no spaces like this. You can't go east of the Boulevard because it's restricted. So where else are these magical, make-believe showrooms going to pop up? Let me know. And the other thing, Commissioners, I live in that neighborhood. I have to leave that exit every single day, and it's a nightmare. It's a nightmare driving into the community. And one of the reasons is, is right in front of this particular building, there's a very short, when you're going eastbound into Keystone, a very short turn lane to go right. There's this half-messed-up median or swell area that will, when the proper time and the traffic engineers get the design of that particular intersection, will have a much fuller turn right. You'll have a much more dedicated, straight-on into Keystone Point, and you'll have a dedicated left turn. But we're not there yet. What we're doing is a tax amendment. Ask your city attorney if this is a zoning change or it is a small-scale tax amendment, and we'll rely on their opinion. I trust staff to do their work that is necessary at this particular point in time. There's no way to just let this building have this particular zoning because that thing is called spot zoning. We wouldn't allow that. It's illegal. We don't allow it. That's why it's for the district. But if you look district-wide, we don't need to worry about that we're going to have this proliferation of car dealerships all over the way. And by the way, 441 was designed exactly what it is. It was designed to be auto malls 30 years ago because the land was cheap. Nobody wanted to be by the cell, the phone TV towers back then. And those of you who've been around a long time, that's what it was known for. The other thing is truck deliveries. Volvo is going to have cars delivered. Yep. About 10, 12 cars get delivered on that truck. It takes about a half-hour to deliver those cars, and they go on. The dealership, or the showroom, or the businesses there aren't going to do anything that's going to impede the adequate delivery and offloading of those vehicles. But these are such minute, little, certain things that don't need to be addressed at this particular moment because the staff is going to review the plans, make recommendations, tell you where you're going to unload at, and where you're going to do all this stuff. But right now, it's a very simple thing. The only thing, the only difference tonight is, are you going to have minor service or not? That is, that is the crux of it. How many of you see the oil change at Lexus taking place from Biscayne Boulevard? How many of you see the
Folks, please.
The test drives through Keystone from Lexus? I don't think anybody. Okay, so, but everybody's trying to dictate what the route is going to be. When the applicant has already said to staff, we'll put it in writing, that they will not, and by the way, it's against their company policy, it is against their company policy to cross a major highway. It is a right turn, a right turn, a right turn, a right turn. That is all what they want. And so, that is what it is. As far as traffic study goes, anybody can impede anybody's analysis. But common sense, from the people who live in the neighborhood, do you think that there's more parking and more traffic since Wells Fargo left, or less? It's absolutely less. Because I used to go through every day and saw the number of cars, and then ask North Miami Police Department how many tickets they used to write because of people illegally parking in the city swell area next to the Johnson &amp; Wales vacant lot. And one or two other things real quick is, the auto repair center there is air-conditioned, it's soundproof, so you won't need to worry about any noise, no loudspeakers, none of that type of things. Of course, that isn't going to be what happens. Okay. Here is what the typical showroom, I mean, the service center is going to look like.
Let's put it up where everyone can see it on the monitor. If camera can get a shot of that.
Indoor, air-conditioned. Zoom in there really close. We're not talking about a Jiffy Lube. You're talking about millions of dollars' worth of equipment that they use and the computers to look at these things, or whatever they do to recapture the exhaust and everything else. You're not talking about a local mechanic shop. You're talking about a major worldwide corporation who has to meet more stricter standards than our local businesses do. So they're not going to do anything to harm their consumer base. They're not going to do anything to harm the city. They're not going to do anything to harm their investment. That's not why they're here. And folks, a comment was made, "They're not paying me enough." I'm here, and if anybody ever questions that again, they complain that they don't think I work, and then they complain that I'm working. So, so let's get out there. I do sell real estate, but I'm representing them on this governmental transaction. There's nothing wrong, and I've strived and said for 20 years, "We have to have new businesses in North Miami. We have to go out on a limb. We have to try something new." But I have to live here. I have to raise my kid. I have to drive in this area too. And I got to live with my neighbors, who are very good neighbors of mine that stood up here and spoke out against it. And I'm okay with that. But I'm going to show them the correct information, alleviate some of the fears, and I know one of the things is the traffic. We all have concerns about traffic. But where is that traffic going? They're going to Aventura, they're going to Sunny Isles, they're going to Bay Harbor, they're going to Midtown, and they're going out west. But we're not getting, we're getting crapped on every day by people coming in and out, and they're not stopping. What are you going to stop for? The new Wendy's? We have vacant properties on Biscayne Boulevard. The old Woody's can't sell. The, thank you, great. The place next to the dry cleaners, very difficult to get the rent that they want. So, right now, you have a major corporation willing to come in and spend millions of dollars to dress up a building, invest in the community, and we spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on a study telling us how to get these companies here. Now you have one here, but oh my God, we're going to be concerned about the traffic. We're going to be concerned about this, we're going to be concerned about that. Folks, the other night at the Commission meeting, and some of you were there, and I'm not going to name which Commission, Planning Commission people were there, the mayor had a perfect comment when he says, "I want to see new development. I want to see cranes in the air. I want to see prosperity. I'm tired of loo," this is what he said, "I'm tired of losing out to these other communities." He says he wants the comp plan and the changes made, and I wholeheartedly agree with him. And we also have one other person who made a comment. He says, "The only buildings we allow in North Miami are the buildings that don't need cranes to build." Which means we don't shoot for anything bigger than what is the status quo. So, Planning Commission, you've seen this type of things before. You know what conditions you can put in. You know what the next steps are. Look at the pictures of what exists today, and you tell me that that investment in our community doesn't weigh heavier than a few concerns that can be addressed later than I would give up. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Burns. Okay, at this time, we will now entertain. Any questions and comments from the Commission? Mr. Eich, I'd like to begin with you at your end.
Well,
So, sir, step up to the plate.
I want to thank Mr. Heimmarsh for his study in mental telepathy and know what I was thinking, and that we could bring that maybe to the stock market tomorrow. You know what they're thinking, and I can play the odds. I would appreciate it.
I recall.
All right, that's. Well, where do I begin? I came here in 1970. There were two car dealerships, Monroe Zeder and Crippen Osmobile on 123rd Street. And that was pretty ugly. It bordered Keystone Point, and it looked like hell, and eventually they sold out, went out of business, what have you. And then, I remember the human cry against a self-storage place that was going to go in their place. "Hell, no, we don't want that. We don't want a self-storage place over there. That's terrible. Oh, my God, the end of the world is going to be here. My property values are going to go down." And then we ended up with LA Fitness, that beautiful building. Now, to me, maybe I'm, you know, I'm looking at LA Fitness, and I think that's a pretty good-looking building over there, but I hear a lot of people in the Keystone complaining about it. One of the things that concerned me about LA Fitness is the parking garages. And one of the things that I brought up here about a year ago was the existing parking garages and the parking garages that we're going to develop in the future. And why do they have to be so sterile, so ugly, so deteriorating? We have an ordinance now that you shouldn't have it facing a residential area. But in a multi, a high area like myself, I have to look at the Johnson &amp; Wales parking garage, which was built by Sandy Weisberger, who was a Keystone resident, when he built that Medical Arts Building over there. And I had this four-story albatross behind me, and luckily for me, Johnson &amp; Wales came in there and they landscaped it. They did some things to take away the ugliness of that parking garage. So one of the things that I've been pushing for is to redo our parking garage ordinance and to bring it into the 21st century, where they will be, or the 20, where they will become a thing of beauty. So, you know, I look at the human cry about Home Depot. I was up in Chicago when Home Depot went on, but we don't want that Home Depot here. The traffic is going to be here. And I look at the human cry about Johnson &amp; Wales. Well, I've got news for you, folks. Johnson &amp; Wales saved my neighborhood over there. They did a beautiful job. That plaza is absolutely gorgeous. And I heard, "Oh, the traffic, the traffic, the traffic." Well, folks, I was the traffic sergeant here at one time back in the 80s, and I subsequently became the chief of police. And when I became the chief of police, Keystone Point wanted guard gates. And we put them in. And I heard the same human cry then. "Oh, my God, that traffic is going to be out on Biscayne Boulevard, and we're not going to be able to move. Oh, my God, that's terrible." Well, baloney. We moved. We adapted. And Keystone Point ended up with the guard gates, and rightfully so. Couple of years went by, I heard the same thing in San Souci. "Oh, my God, we can't have guard gates. We're going to have traffic jams." Well, actually, San Souci ended up with about five street closures and a guardhouse over there. And it benefited the citizens that lived there. But we didn't have this massive catastrophic event of massive gridlock like we had in Manhattan, where I grew up at. And then I look at when we had the Johnson &amp; Wales Plaza put in, I heard the same human cry. "Oh, my God, we're going to have backups all the way over to Bay Harbor, Bell Harbor, Indian Creek. Oh, my God, it was, I thought the world was going to collapse." Well, it didn't happen. We ended up with a beautiful piece of property over there that enhanced everybody. And not too long ago, Publix wants to redo their place over there, face it north, and I heard a big human cry about how it was going to upset everybody, and the traffic is going to be detrimental to our health and welfare. Folks like the former mayor said, "I came here in 1970." We had an expression, I mentioned this the other day in the police department, come the 80s. We used to say in the police department, "This was the town that time forgot. We weren't progressing." I heard the same arguments, "Traffic, traffic, traffic. No to anything over four stories. No to density. No to building. No, no, no." Well, everything else around us developed. Everything. I go over to Sunny Isles, and I see that beautiful city over there. I go up to Aventura, I see a nice, clean city up there, and I want to scratch my head and cry. What's happened into the city that gave me a home after I fought the war in Vietnam and I came back? I love this city. I can live anyplace I want. I came here in 1970 after the war in Vietnam, and it gave me a home. That's why I'm here. Because I feel something for this community. That's why I'm on this Planning Commission, because I care. And I want to see this town develop into something that it can be. You know, I heard earlier, and tonight, we said, "Well, downtown, it's really developed after Moca." No, we missed, we missed the ball on that one, folks. Yes, we have some nice stores there, but Moca could have been like one word. I see development down there in the city of Miami. I see new buildings going up. I see new businesses. I see the energy of the people down there enjoying themselves at restaurants and nightlife and going to the, oh, and it breaks my heart, why can't I have this in my community? Why? I drive around the city, and I see it dilapidated. I see slum lords in business, and I want to cry. And so, when I see a project come up, there's a project now, Talbot, on 123rd Street, who wants to put up a nice building. We have resistance on that. Why? 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 Is this in a water? What's going on here? And I see this project coming up. Now, I go to Lexus. I go up there every two weeks, bring my car in. And the reason I go up there, I'm vain. I get a manicure and a haircut and everything else up there. Okay? And I see how that service, that service bay is. And I was amazed. Took me on a tour of it the other, about a month ago. The guy that's in charge of security took me on a tour of the place. And that service bay isn't like I remember when I was a young guy, and you smelt the oil and the gas and the grease and the tires. That service bay, you could almost compare that. And I don't, Dr., I'm not trying to be facetious. You can almost look at that, that's like an operating room. It's spotless, it's clean. The paint alone on the floor was over $100,000. So when I hear, "We're going to do minor service at this proposed Volvo dealer," it doesn't offend me. We're not doing bodywork there. We're not doing paint. Now, if you want to look at some of the things I see on Biscayne Boulevard, I usually do about six to eight miles a day. I walk, I walk around the city. So I see it from the ground level. I don't drive around. I see the graffiti on the poles, and I call it in. I see the garbage out on the street. You go to 123rd Street right now, right now, just north of 123rd Street to that gas station on the corner, and you'll see all the dilapidated cars parked out on the street that belong to that guy. You can't even get to the sewer. I called Public Works the other day, said, "You've got to clean the drains over there because of these cars that just parked out there. It's garbage trash." Okay? I listen, sir. I don't mean to be, let me, let me speak, please. I see, I see dealerships, gas stations that are dirty and filthy, and that's not what this place is about. Okay? It's not what this place is about. I seen that old bank building down there on San Souci Boulevard, abandoned ever since the hurricane in, what, 2008, just sitting there, a derailing. "Oh, we don't want to rip it down. We don't want to build anything here." Well, what do we want to do, folks? Do we want to go back to 1980? We can't do that. We want to go back to 1970? We can't do that. I remember when I came here, this was a vibrant town. You had Gallagher's over there. You had all kinds of fantastic restaurants, the Court of the Shadows. What do we have today? I'm not knocking Wendy's, but what do we have? A Wendy's? A McDonald's? A Burger King? Where's our nightlife? We have nothing. Now we have a person coming into the city, and I remember, it's funny, you said 45 years, I can't believe it. I remember when that building went up, I was on the police department. And it never impressed me. It was there. And I see a guy coming in here that wants to spend a few million bucks and to put a dealership in there and to create jobs and to clean it up and to make it look nice. And what do I hear? All the traffic. All this, all that, all this, all that. Well, folks, you know, we're either going to go forward, or like we used to say in the military, we're going to go in the retrograde and retreat. And if that's what we want to do as a city, then let's do it. Let's cut out kidding ourselves. We're not going to get off the dime, off the spot unless we progress. Yes, there's some fine tuning that we can do with this thing. I bet you when, if they're going to unload those cars, they're going to unload them on 17th Avenue. Have you people been down 17th Avenue? It's absolutely beautiful today. That was a collaboration between Johnson &amp; Wales and the city of North Miami. I hear Johnson &amp; Wales, they don't pay tax. Well, FBU doesn't pay tax. University doesn't pay tax, but what they did for that neighborhood over there, they improved my quality of life. John Adams said, "The purpose of government is to keep its people happy." Well, I got to tell you, in the 40 years I've been here, Johnson &amp; Wales has made me a hell of a lot more happier in my environment over there because they invested in the infrastructure, they got rid of the crummy buildings, they created jobs, they created green space, they improved the Arch Creek Canal by taking all those damn pine trees out of there. Okay? They benefited us. That was progress. Ronnie Reagan, remember the General Electric, "Progress is our most important thing." We used to have that on our patch, "The city of progress." Well, we haven't progressed in over 30 years. And if we keep this attitude up, that, "We don't want this, we don't want that," we're never going to progress, folks. We're never going to progress. Yes, there can be some tweaking in this thing, but I think it's good for the city. I take that ugly building, and you make it into something beautiful, something that you can be proud of. Something, I want to be proud of my city. I don't want to say, "Oh, you're still living in North Miami? Oh, my God, you're still there?" Oh, I look at 135th Street, east of the Boulevard, how nice that turned around. I go to Keystone Point, I see some nice places over there. I see some older houses that should be knocked down. We knock them down. We rebuild. We do things over. Mr. Prevettel brought out something the other day at the, at a workshop, talking about the Astor Mansion in New York City. And then after it was the Astor Mansion, it was the Madison Square Garden, and they knocked that down. And then it became, correct me if I'm wrong, it became the Empire State Building. Folks, these buildings got to go. We got a guy coming in here, and he's going to give, create jobs and give you something nice to look at. And we're worried about the traffic. The traffic is here now. Let's get the benefit of that traffic. Let's have them shop here in North Miami. Let's get our tax base up. Let's lower our personal taxes down, and let's go for this. Let's, let's stop shooting ourselves in the foot because if we continue to do this, we don't have a city. We're going to have, like Mr. Heimmarsh said, two affluent areas, Keystone and San Souci, and the rest of us are going to wither and die on the vine. Yes, Mr. Heimmarsh, you read my mind, and you know how I feel. I feel very, very passionate about improving this city. I feel very passionate about height and density and knocking off the, I want to see rezoning, I want to see growth. I want to see us like Aventura and Sunny Isles. I want to see a good quality of life here for your children, for the future of this city. That's what I want. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Eich. Mr. Jonte?
I have a question. If we do move along with this, how long will this process take? And also, the construction phase, how will it affect the people that are currently renting or occupying space in that building?
Let me address, this is Fernando Elano. I've already introduced myself. We are looking for a process that should take between six to nine months. We are speaking with Stiles. Stiles is a construction company. It's a very well-known construction company that he had been working for us and have been working for very big projects. So, we believe that between six to nine months, this should be addressed. Please bear in mind that we are keeping and we are purchasing fifty-eight percent of the building. So, let me say, our main asset is gonna be the real estate development. So, our main concern is to keep the level of service that currently all the offices and the twenty-three units that we are looking to purchase and the other, let me say, forty-two percent of the building have today. So, whatever we're gonna do, we must keep the level of service and we need to meet the, the city requirements in terms of spaces. This is an ongoing project, that's true, it's an ongoing project. And we are very happy to address whatever question you have. And we're gonna be very happy in order to try to find common solutions. But I strongly believe that the matter of information is a key factor. We need to explain the project, we need to show how the service is gonna look like. We need to show Ms. Murray how's gonna be the internal side of the showroom. You're gonna have your coffee shop and your minimalist place to come and walking by and to have coffee and maybe lunch with us because the standards of Volvo is requiring today this kind of look and feeling. I would like to share with you this. This is the kind of.
Point of, point of order, please, sir, you need to speak into the mic as these proceedings.
The camera will take a shot of that while you're talking.
So, this is the kind of interior look and feeling that we are looking. If you see from that picture, you can say whatever you want, but that's not a dealership. Probably that's gonna be, Ms. Murray, your place to have a seat and read your book and have your coffee during a lunch break because it's gonna be a beautiful environment that is gonna invite the community to share time with us. That's what we're looking. The showroom's gonna be like that. That's a real render of what's gonna be the outcome. So, we're gonna take care of the current owners of the building. We're gonna take care of the, the units that we're taking over and reassure the level of service. And this is the kind of look and feeling that we are looking from this development.
Thank you. Mister Janti, go ahead. You had a follow-up question?
Now, we've heard all the concerns that the residents of this city have. Now, as far as, one concern, one concern I do have is the parking. You know, parking is limited. My mom told me when they, when Whole Foods came about on Biscayne, she had to park across the street at the Burger King, across the street to go to the Whole Foods just to get a gallon of milk because there was no parking there when they first opened up. I mean, what, what can we do or how are we gonna fix this so we can make sure that the same situation does not occur? I mean, and I believe this is the question that, you know, we all have.
To answer your question, Commissioner, we believe as of this point that there is ample parking for the needs of Volvo and the needs of the tenant. However, again, I stressed already, by right, by current zoning, they're allowed to add two additional levels of parking and still be under the fifty-five-foot height restriction there. That would amount to two hundred parking spaces. So, that is quite possible if, at the end of the design phrase, that the city staff and the designers and the, the show, the Volvo USA's requirements, one thing the owners of this do not want to do is, is have inadequate parking because you will really upset your customers and the tenants of your building and your investment if you don't have enough parking. Why Whole Foods never had a structured parking as part of that complex, I don't know. But we are taking an existing parking garage that exists today, that is very outdated, and is gonna retrofit it to today's standards. And sir, if there needs to be an additional fifty or a hundred parking spaces, it is wise business to add them, especially when you have the zoning in place that will allow you to do that. It makes proper sense, but we're not there yet. We believe with all the calculations and everything that is required and what the tenants are requesting and what the Volvo is requesting, that will far exceed the parking standards. And so, the parking will not be an issue for that particular building. Thank you.
One thing I, I wanted to address to staff. The Wells Fargo took up X amount of spaces, if I'm not correct. Is that, that, that they did and they generated quite a bit of traffic? I believe we, we pretty much established that, that on an ongoing basis, there was a lot of traffic that went in and out of there. Plus, if I remember at one time, they were also offering car washing service downstairs in that low, lower parking garage. You could go into the bank and also get your car washed there. Whether it was legal or not, it was, it was taking place. So, you know, there, there was an incident where that building had a lot of traffic going in and out of it at one time, plus probably either illegal or illegal car wash operation taking place underneath there. And they also had a valet system in place at that building at one time, which there were a lot of parking spaces available and that weren't being used because somebody ran a valet concession out of there. So, what you're, what I'm saying is, I think you're seeing that a, a lot of that has been alleviated. And from what you could start to surmise is that there's going to be adequate enough space, I would think, to, to address that. Are you familiar with anything that I had said about that?
You're, you're actually, correct. Actually, when they remove the four lanes of drive-through that was expanded from the original construction, thirty-two parking spaces will be replaced back into the capability of being used. The, the ingress, egress of that particular drive-through, you would drive through in four lanes coming out. All that is gonna be, the, the pork chops that are in there are all gonna be torn out, resurfaced. The, the whole parking underneath in that whole building is gonna be reconstructed to today's standards, better flows in and out. And they're actually gaining more parking, usable parking spaces now that those drive-through facilities are going to be eliminated.
Kevin, if they say fifteen percent, could you kind of give me a ballpark observation as to what, fifteen percent of that garage?
The, the, the service area, I believe, is gonna be about ten thousand, twelve thousand square feet, maybe less.
Would you say that was equal to about what the bank took up as tenants there? Less than what they had reserved for their parking, for their customers, plus the drive-through windows?
Besides the drive-through, they had fifty-eight parking spaces reserved for the bank itself and not the use of the rest of the building. Again, we are going to be taking up less square footage in the service department than what the whole drive-through configuration and lanes take up now. I know there's engineers on the, the panels who understand that and know how that calculation works, well above my pay grade. They understand it, they know how to reach that, that, that formula, and that's what they're going to do. But again, the, the service area is gonna be about ten thousand square feet, which is, is very small.
And would you say that customer, based on my experience being a Volvo dealer using your North Miami facility, is it true you have to make an appointment to get service? You just don't drive in there and, and ask for service? Most times you would get.
Seventy percent, excuse me, sir, I didn't want to interrupt you.
Go ahead.
No, no, seventy percent of our service customers, they are under appointment. For sure, there are people that they are driving by and they say, I need service now because I have an urgent situation. But this is request by customer, it's something that the customers are looking forward to have, it's an appointment. It's easier for us, it's easier for you to organize yourself towards your daily activities. So, the answer is yes, sir.
So, based on, this is my observation, based on that, what would you say the customer, the, the amount of customers you would have, like, between, your, your service starts, what, seven o'clock, seven-thirty?
We open at eight and we close at five. This is very important because we are saying open operations till nine, but the service is gonna be closed.
How many, how many cars would you figure you would service in the morning?
We do on daily basis between fifteen to twenty customers.
Daily?
Daily basis, fifteen to twenty customers, yes, sir.
All right.
And this is the number that we're gonna keep. If you think that currently we have six service base, okay? The information that this lady shared before is incorrect because we have six lifts, one alignment, a, a tool machine, and ten base. The requirement of the manufacturer and this development is gonna be to increase. But we're, we're looking something like fifteen, a, a service base. Fifteen service base could be fit within fifteen parking spaces. Just to understand the, you know, the, the, let me say, the, the dimensions that we're speaking about.
The North Miami facility you're working out of now, what is the size of that compared to this size that you want?
Let me say, Mister Kevin Burns spoke about ten thousand square foot of service. There, we have four thousand square foot of service, but we have other three thousand of ports. So, the total amount that we are looking is ten thousand square foot. That's, looks like those eight thousand that we have currently in the, in the current location.
Okay, but would you say that that eighteen is a maximum or, or would you have days where you have less or more?
That's the, the requirement is based on the manufacturer's standards. So, they are looking for twenty-five thousand square foot.
No, I'm talking about servicing the cars, because what I'm looking at is there a way that you can regulate number of cars that you would have come in for service?
Yeah, that's for sure, that's based on.
If we assume that we would wanna say you would be limited to X amount of servicing of cars per day, would that be something that you would, would take under consideration and be able to still meet your standards of service for your vehicles and to satisfy your customers' needs and demands?
We could evaluate together a sort of limit in terms of the amount of customers that we are gonna have on a daily basis. Let me say, the natural limit is gonna be the number of service bay multiplied by the service hours that we have open, and this is gonna give us the radio of the, the amount of customers that we can serve.
But again, you would not have a problem if there was a restriction on time of service?
No, in terms of service, I'm more than glad and open because the restriction is gonna come from the opening hours of the service. It's gonna be from eight to five. If we can find a restriction way that can help the, the, the committee, and let me say, the neighborhoods to feel much more comfortable, we're always forward to open the numbers. But whatever numbers that we're gonna place on the table, and we were saying, between fifteen to twenty customers a day, if you comparison with the Wells Fargo traffic that you was generating, it's gonna be ten times less of what you had before. So, I can open the numbers, we can say, we're gonna be ten times less, unless, I don't know, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five. If this gives you confident in terms of taking the decision, we're almost looking forward to have a common agreement of this kind of situation. And we are happy to inform, let me say, once again, that this is gonna be a great opportunity and not a problem, that's for sure.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry if I interrupted you, I didn't know if you had any further questions with that, but I wanted to just kind of dovetail on your concern about the, the parking and hope that he gave you a little bit better understanding.
Yes, he did, thank you. Also, did we take into account the other tenants that are occupying that shopping center? I E. McDonald's, Publix, Fitness Center, all these, I mean. Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's a standalone. It's an office building. Any other questions?
That's it, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mister Janti. Mrs. Burley, I know you've been very patient, and I turn the mic over to you.
Okay, good evening, can everyone hear me? I'll use my teacher voice. Okay. I have a couple of questions, but first I would like to say, I, I do believe that it is a very good idea. I think it's a lucrative idea, a lucrative plan rather to refurbish, so to speak, an old dilapidated building that isn't aesthetically pleasing, which is a word that has been used throughout this, this meeting, this forum. So, if they're going to come in, the Volvo dealership is going to come in and revitalize this building and continue to beautify our city, then why not give them a shot? Given that the provisions that I believe we all come to an agreement to request or that the, the citizens would request of them to correct or clarify are made, I really don't see an issue with going forward with this. Also, I, I do have some questions about the job creation that I did hear some mention to. I did hear some mention to thirty to forty jobs that can possibly be created from this project. Now, have those jobs been outlined as to what positions will be open to the city residents?
Absolutely. We spoke about a forecast between thirty to forty. Why? We currently employ forty-seven people in our operation four forty-one. We also state that we are gonna remain in four forty-one. So, four forty-one is, is, is still gonna be a main part of our resources and operation and net income. So, what, what we are planning to do down here in North Miami is to bring maybe ten or fifteen of the key players and then hire the difference that we have. For sure, we're gonna be more than happy to try to give priority to the people and residents of North Miami. And we would like to share this with the city, this process with the city in order to start working this before we finish the, the, the operation. And the positions that we are looking, they come from commercial positions to a sales position, to technical position, to clerical position. So, this, I think, is gonna be a good opportunity that we could address together.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Also, so, here's a hypothetical situation, which I think many car owners, and I, I would, I would assume that many of us, if not all of us, own a car, have owned a car throughout our lifetime. If I have this dealership that services my car, the type of car that I drive, I would want on a rainy day to be able to say, my windshield wiper is defective, can you fix it? My tire is going flat, is it possible to put some air in it for me? You know, just the, the typical things that may go wrong on an everyday basis while you're on the road that are minute and can be considered very minuscule repairs or fixes, so to speak, to your cars. I, I don't think, you know, that person would have to drive to four forty-one to get those services done. I, I, I think it's a disservice to the customers or the potential customers that, that would be, that would possibly have to be serviced in that area. I, I, I don't see a reason why those minor repairs couldn't be made there. Also, I wanted to make mention to, there was a, I think it was Mister Burns who mentioned something about additions to the parking lot. If, I think you can go up two floors, if I'm not mistaken? If, if there are more parking spaces that need to be added?
Yes, if it, if it is, if it is seen that it is needed and it's in the, the city requires it, yes. Additional parking level, either one, a half of one, two, three quarters could be accommodated on the structure today, and it is allowed under today's code to do it. And if it's necessary, they, they will do it.
Okay, my question would be, who would absorb the cost? Would it be Volvo?
Volvo, absolutely, yes. Unless you wanna pay for it, we'll, we'll entertain that, but, no, it's, it's actually. And by the way, if you happen to own a unit in that particular building and all of a sudden you have another entity coming in, is gonna make millions and millions of dollars of improvements to your building, guess what happens to the value of the other units that are not part of the real estate transaction now? It's going to upgrade that, that, that. It's going to upgrade that, that building, upgrade the tax base of those building, of those units, and much nicer real estate investment than what you previously had had. Thank you.
Okay, and lastly, the loading and the unloading times. Can you clarify, will the, will the cars be loaded and unloaded at random times throughout the day or throughout the week? How does that work?
Allowed me, please ma'am, to address you with some numbers. Because it's important to understand the dimensions that we are speaking about. We do thirty-five sales a month in four forty-one. This is a very small operation. We are not Lexus, we are not a GM store, we are not a Chevrolet store. This means that we sell three cars sometimes per day, that's all. So the turnover in terms of inventory and the request on inventory is based on a thirty-car supply a month. So we have trucks that they have between eight to ten cars by delivery. So if this happens, in order to keep the current level of inventory stable, you will have three times a month or three trucks a month, just and only, that are doing the downloading of the cars. Just to put you in dimensions of what we're speaking about. So we're gonna be happy also to work with the city in terms of timing. We can do that request to the manufacturer, okay? If we found that there's a specific timing, that this is not gonna increment or disturb the current situation of the traffic, we're always happy to work on this with you. But in terms of dimension of the phenomenon, we're speaking about three times a month and just and only three trucks. So these are the numbers, okay? So we need to put numbers to, and fact to what we feel. And once again, it's a matter of information, and we're more than happy to give you information on this.
May I propose that if possible, for you all to get with the homeowners associations of both communities that neighbor the dealership and possibly talk about times that, or negotiate a time that would be a better pickup and drop-off time?
Absolutely, absolutely. No problem for us.
Going to say, as a point of order, this use is, still has to go before the Board of Adjustment. And those proceedings for the special exception, those are the kinds of conditions that could be attached as a condition of approving the special exception. If they don't get the special exception, they don't get to, they don't get to operate. So these are the kinds of details that are very appropriate at that level.
Then, to that point, sir, do we have to make that condition prior to either passing or denying this?
You can certainly make that, you can consider that, you can make that a condition as far as what your consideration is, yes. For adoption of this, of this ordinance.
And what I may add, you know, because if you look at, you know, item fifteen, also there's a restricted covenant that the applicant will voluntarily prefer. And so in that covenant, you can add that condition.
Yeah, item thirteen?
Thirteen.
Yes.
Restrictive hours for car delivery and for hours of service?
Loading and unloading restricted is already, it already appears on number eleven as a condition of this approval. So you could attach a timing of deliveries as part of the declaration of restrictive covenants.
And, and then in writing this report, we thought about it, but then we say, you know, it would be best to leave that up to the community to decide over now. Because we can, we can say, you know, between such and such hour, but you know, it's really up to the resident. That's why, you know, you can, I wonder, you, the legislative body of the city, really come up with that. Those hours, so staff, we can implement those, because we don't want to impose those hours. And then even further, at the Board of Adjustment, when they come back for the special exception use, if approved, if the text amendment is adopted, then we can, because the community can come together and address those issues. Because we didn't want to impose those.
And that, that again, would be what the Board of Adjustment would, would address.
Yeah, but, but they.
Even if we, if we, we include it in our language.
Exactly.
Do we need to include, do we need to, well, do we have to include that language in a form of a motion? With total consent?
You're seeking a limitation of deliveries, which is appropriate or amiable to the community. And I think that was your suggestion, is that they get back, they get some feedback from the community. And if you're gonna have this use there, then these are the times that we would prefer that you make your deliveries so as to have the least amount of disruption to traffic.
If there's no set fast time, which I don't think we right now know the metrics involved in that. But if we say that within, within the covenant, that a, a delivery time must be reasonably addressed or met.
Stated once that timing is ascertained, yes.
Alright, can that language, can staff be kind enough to draw up that language?
You can propose that, that to be our recommendation, yes.
Okay, so at this point, do we need to entertain a motion for that to be added, or can we just all agree?
You could, you could do this as a board at the end. I believe that Mr. Prevotella also had a modification, so we will.
Alright, so let's hear all the modifications.
Yeah, let's hear all the modifications, and then you approve or reject all or some, and then we'll move from there.
Mr. Chairman, one of the areas that, where they could unload would be like a hundred and twenty-sixth Street, northeast seventeenth avenue, there's no residential there. You have the campus surrounding that. And right there on seventeenth avenue, they could unload over there. And you make it at a certain time where you wouldn't bother the neighbors in Keystone, or, you know, back up the traffic.
Or your neighborhood.
No, I don't, I wouldn't care, I mean, it doesn't, actually, folks, for your information, northeast sixteenth avenue is supposed to be redone starting June of next year. So that'll be a blessing, they're gonna put sidewalks out there over the railroad tracks. Everything that we fought for a few years ago before the Metropolitan Planning Organization, they're supposed to do sixteenth avenue next June, so, I mean, and this would be on seventeenth avenue, which would, less traffic. It's more of the campus, but, you know, you can work that out. I agree, you don't, you don't wanna upset the, I mean, I.
Yeah, I don't think we're, we know quite yet until they look, but I at least wanna have it on record that we addressed the need to set times and possibly a location for any sort of deliveries.
And then this is why, you know, in item eleven, we talked about, you know, having, you know, the loadings on two hundred fifty feet away, you did cannot accommodate that on site also. And then, you know, as the commissioner, you know, each mentioned, you know, I mean, that can be an alternate, an alternate site, you know, for this type of, you know, loading.
Alright.
I mean, bearing that they don't, you know, disturb, you know, the residents.
Mrs. Bule, are you, are you done? Any other question? Go ahead.
I would just like to make it clear that I do agree with many of the residents in saying, actually, I agree with everyone, and all the points that they all made. Everyone made valid points to, to this situation. However, I will say that there are some things that do need to be clarified. And I would like for them to be clarified in an appropriate time, that I guess we all designate or set for them to be clarified. And other than that, as Mr. Each said, I do believe that this is a, this will be vital to our community. This does lift the face of, of our community. And hopefully, because I am on the other side, or actually, I'm somewhat in the middle, I would like to see some of this trickle over to seventh avenue and so on and so forth, so that the entire North Miami community looks just as nice as Biscayne. I would love to see companies such as Volvo and other major companies and Fortune 500 companies pour into all of North Miami. So if we have to start with Biscayne, then let's do that. With the intentions of pouring all of those resources into our entire community. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Mr. James, thank you for your patience, you have the floor.
Alright, I'll try to make it quick. Just so I understand the process, tonight, all we're doing is, is this a rezoning? That's my first question.
I would have given the oath if this was a rezoning. And no, this is a legislative item, fairly debatable, and, and it's merely a text amendment, yes.
And now, this isn't, this isn't, someone pointed out the fact that this is making a special exception for this particular project. This is, this is, this is not specific to this property. This applies to everyone in this zoning corridor.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if you wanna take a crack.
Well, I'm gonna say this, that they have to meet the, they would first have to go before the Board of Adjustment in the event this is approved. They have to go and make their own case before the Board of Adjustment at a quasi-jurisdictional proceeding to obtain a special exception, and then meet the quality, the limiting language of the definition, which requires at a minimum one acre, I believe. So you have to fall within the definition categories to, to even qualify to go before the Board of Adjustment.
And I may add to this, you know, yes, this application, they have a specific site, they want to propose that use there. But this is district-wide. And then, under article three, section three dash ten oh four, an applicant, any applicant can initiate or text amendment, which applies to the entire district.
Okay.
And then, in staff, you know, what we propose, I mean, this is what the applicant, because we propose that, that this item, if the text amendment is approved, it will be a special exception use. Not so staff alone, not at the discretion of approving or denying such project. So that's why we add another layer of, you know, review, of judicial review by making a special exception use. Special exception use is not a use that is otherwise prohibited. It's a use that is allowed, but because of certain, you know, I mean, factors, you know, and negative, you know, incidences, do we require a further level of review? And then after that, there will be a DRC process, where we have to look at the site plan. There will be a precise plan for us to, for staff, you know, all the city department, department and agencies involved to further review, to make sure that it meets the, I mean, the current level of services when it comes to traffic and water and sewer, and landscaping, you know, zoning, and all those other things. So this is basically one due diligence items, you know, for now.
Correct. Because if we didn't, without the text amendment, they couldn't even get to the level of where we can even look at a site plan. Which is why we don't have many of these things, such as parking analysis, full traffic study, a complete layout of floor plans, and we don't have any of that, because that's not required as part of the application that's presented to us today.
And then for the traffic study, one, because we didn't even review that, because once we have a site and a DRC and this sort of traffic study, then we have our consultant, not staff consultant, we view that traffic study.
Correct, that's another point I wanted to be across. This, this is merely provided as kind of something ballpark to kind of call some of the, the concern, the potential concerns with the traffic and just show, I mean, this is a trip generation. This is something that's done in two minutes. Yes, it's signed and sealed by a traffic consultant, but this isn't anything that's, that's concrete or that's even gonna support what they're potentially proposing. So, once they actually develop the plans, lay out, get the floor plan, get a site plan, then they see whether or not they do meet parking code. I don't think anyone here can safely say, at this level, where the site meets code or not, because we don't even have a site plan, we don't have any type of engineer drawn, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so those are two of the items I wanna mention now. Once it gets to the, this, let's say this, however it happens now, and this does get put into place, when they have to go to the next process of going to the Board of Adjustments, they will have to have the site plans. And at that point, will they have to have had a full traffic study done? Is it required for that application?
We would, concurrently, we can have the DRC, so we can have, you know, some of those comments. And at least, you know, so we can properly inform, you know, the Board of Adjustment once we take, if you make a recommendation for either to approve or deny they have. But at least we have the fact to substantiate, you know, what we're saying. So concurrently, we, we don't want them to spend too much money in plans, knowing that, you know, the board can be applied. But at least we have some preliminary plans, and some preliminary comments from other city departments also.
I just, let me, I just wanna, I hate to, I don't wanna extend this, but traffic seems, parking and traffic seems to be the main thing everyone's saying.
Yes.
What I, what I guess, what I want is to hear some type of assurance that more than just a trip generation is gonna be provided.
A full traffic study.
And on top of just the city, since this is being an increase, or a change of use actually, and this is on Biscayne Boulevard, which is a state road, they will be required to go to the Florida Department of Transportation, correct? And they will, at that level, also be looking at circulation, loading, on top of ours requirements that we're setting here.
Yes, sir.
And so even if we, they get past this, and they get past the city, they still have to get to the state, which look at the entire corridor, not just their specific limits of North Miami. They look along the whole corridor with the Wavy City of North Miami line, and they see the impact, correct?
Yes, but this is not a, a city, you know, own road, this is a state, like you say, a state road. And then, we don't have jurisdiction over that one.
You don't, exactly, so even if we did, they get approval, or our approval is contingent upon them approving it as well.
And even for other issue, like Durham still has to approve any.
And Durham still has, exactly.
Yeah, and state and federal agencies.
The concerns with some of the environmental, potential environmental hazards that could take place because of the minor repairs, those, even if Durham didn't approve it, we couldn't even approve that. And Durham has jurisdiction over the whole Miami-Dade County, whether you're a incorporated city or not.
Yes, sir.
Their environmental regulations, how, how way are any sort of local?
Yeah, I mean, because they have to meet, I mean, one of the requirements have to meet any condition imposed by any other, you know, county or state or federal agency. And then, you know, also, when they go to Durham for building permit, for fire, because that's another layer of review, they have to go apply for their building permit, and then they go to Durham, and then review for.
Durham fire and impact.
And impact physical, for, on the impact.
So that's another thing, I kinda heard that mentioned with level of service, whether our infrastructure gets supported. They, they, if, if, if what they're proposing isn't supported by our, our concurrency, they still can't do the project. So all these things have to be in place before they get final approval.
And everything, yeah. I mean, but granted, this is, I mean, in this case, this is an existing building, but for future uses.
Correct.
I mean, all those concurrency have to be met.
Okay, but tonight, all we're simply doing is amending a text.
Allowing that use in the district, that's all.
Okay, and then what's current, and just to get clarification on, today, if, if a dealership, someone else wanted to build, repurpose that building, they could have, they could sell cars?
They can have a car boutique there, just similar to the Fiat there.
Where they have the cars parked on the, along the front, which I think someone mentioned that they kinda saw as eyesore?
Yes.
But this, this applicant is not proposing that.
No.
The reason why is because that's not what their design is geared towards.
I mean, I mean, what they're proposing is greater in scope, in magnitude. And then, and then, one of the thing with the Fiat, you know, service are not allowed there. Because it's basically a display of vehicle, it's a car boutique. And this is greater in scope, and therefore, that use is not, I've mentioned in the report, is not listed under any category in our LDR right now.
Okay, so we're, we're creating something because we've seen that this is some type of demand.
You have to take a proactive approach to what's happening in one of the communities.
Okay, and then the final point is, I think, you know, mixed development is mixed development. You know, I know some people may not like certain types, but if it's allowable by our code, I mean, and you have, I mean, that's what it is, that's what's gonna do, it's mixed development. You can't just have all resident, I mean, all restaurants, for example, or supermarkets, because then it's really not mixed development.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, that, was that, I guess, my, what I'm trying to say is, is does this follow what our comprehensive plan speaks to in terms of mixed development?
I mean, this would be, yes, it would be a type of mixed use ever in, because it would be retail, there are other offices. But, you know, this is typical to where the, you know, I mean, shopping center, you have, you know, retail. In some base, you have offices, you have, you know, doctors. Because that's why, you know, even under that category, we did talk about, you know, retail, sales and services.
Correct.
So we look at it as a category, you know, but in a sense, it's not really a mixed use as, when you talk about in the NRO, for example, any of, you can have residential and commercial, for example, you know, integration of uses. But this one would allow it, but you know, but it's basically commercial in nature.
Okay. Those are all the questions I have.
Thank you. Mr. Prevotella, thank you for being patient. You were the last one.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I would like to thank the people that have come up to present tonight on, on both sides. Very informative, well-prepared, very passionate, of course, as always. And it's, I also appreciate seeing our, our former Commissioner Maureen. Glad to see you again, and we should have a guest chair for you.
Glad to see you again, and we should have a guest chair for you up here. I'm gonna, since there are a number of things were thrown out in the course of the evening, I'm gonna try to zero into the building almost geographically, taking a point that's furthest away. The idea of a car dealership by Ocean Cadillac at the, where the Causeway meets the bay, or where North Miami meets the bay at the Causeway, I think it's very unlikely, very, very unlikely that they'll have a car dealership there. Can't say a hundred percent, but there would be a lot of obstacles, a lot of things to overcome for that to be realized. So, I don't know if that's a factor in evaluating this particular parcel. It was mentioned that Whole Foods might be a generator of other like-minded retail and other establishments in line with Whole Foods, and I thought that almost made the case for Volvo, that Whole Foods, if it has its reputation as being people-friendly and pro-health, what car dealer, what car brand, more than Volvo, has presented themselves as in the interest of people and safety for people? So, maybe, this is actually a result of Whole Foods, as strange as that might sound. They may be here because Whole Foods is down the road, and they wanna, they wanna work off that synergy. When we talk about Keystone, and a lot of residents here are very proud of the neighborhood, and I'm in San Souci, you know, I drove by the other day a little bit more with this project in mind, and with the comp plan also in mind. And it's a little sad to say that partially due to our attitude, we've all begun, we've all become a little bit older and tired. Yes, there are some new buildings, and yes, people are freshening things up, and yes, there are some nice examples of mid-century modern architecture. But we are doing this to ourselves and getting more and more tired and worn down, and there is nothing sort of fresh and inviting about our community. It becomes less and less, and for every one new thing that might be nice, we have a hundred or a thousand homes that are just decaying one more year. If you look at that entryway to Keystone, as was pointed out in these drawings, we didn't, the photographs, didn't need the photographs to know that that is really a lackluster intersection. The properties around the AT&T, the T-Mobile and such, and Evio's, it's a reconditioned, a rehabbed gas station. You know, hopefully, we can aspire to better than that. It really, it should not be the benchmark. We really should be able to do better than that. And you cross the street and you see the existing mid-rise building, it's not even a high-rise building, and that also has its date, it's vintage, it's not necessarily so, they've done some plantings down below, but it's not so inviting. And this, on the other hand, as apprehensive as I was and am about car dealerships, I was really rather relieved, quite relieved. I'm relieved that it is someone willing to invest in North Miami to make something a little bit better. If you look at the, what they're proposing, even if it doesn't go to this in the final stage, what they're proposing is pretty much better than anything else around in that whole section of North Miami, if not all of North Miami. It's trying to bring some new life to this location. I'm relieved that the traffic will probably be less than what it was with the bank. I'm also relieved that when you have a, somebody coming into an office condo, an office building, and they have a majority stake, they somewhat dictate the lifestyle or the repairs and such that'll take place in that building. They pretty much call the shots when they have a majority. When you have a condominium, as some of us know, you have a condominium, and there are one or two owners, you have one apartment or two apartments, it's very hard to get everybody moving in the right direction. It's really an uphill battle, and a lot of times, you'll see it all around North Miami, things fall by the wayside, the energy isn't there. When you have an occupant, if there was an agency occupant, such as Immigration or so, taking over more than fifty percent, you probably wouldn't see anything happening with this. It'd probably just be exactly the way it is and really would show no promise. If you have, on the other hand, an organization or an entity or a company that their whole pitch is in sales, there's no chance that they're going to take a majority stake and let that building deteriorate and fall apart. They're gonna do their best to make that framework for their product look as inviting as possible. And I take some consolation in that, that I think it will be in good hands. I'm also, as we cross over, consider Johnson and Wales. If they really had such a strong, they knew about this, if they had such a strong consideration, one way or the other, pro or con, they would've shown up tonight, and yet, they didn't. So, I would think that passive response is that they're okay. And I think they, it's almost a little bit of approval that they'd like to see some change in the neighborhood as well, a positive change in the neighborhood.